Folks, let us come to order. Good evening and welcome to the City of Madeira Beach Board of Commissioners' regular meeting. Today is Tuesday, August 12th, and the time is 6:00 PM. Mr. City Manager, would you please lead us in this evening's-- or, excuse me, City Attorney, would you please lead us in this evening's invocation?
I'd be happy to. Our heavenly fathers, we strive to serve the people of Madeira Beach tonight. We ask not for your concern for us, but for the men and women of the United States Armed Forces serving in Afghanistan who face danger every day to protect us as we exercise our rights and privileges as free citizens of this great land. We ask that you protect them and give comfort to their loved ones, make their absence from home and family short, aid them in their accomplishment of their tasks, and bring them back safely to their families as soon as their mission allows. This we pray. Amen.
Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of our Country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Would the City Clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Here.
Commissioner Lister?
Commissioner Poe?
Here.
Commissioner Schatz?
Here.
Mayor Palladino?
Here. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the provided minutes.
I'll make the motion to approve the following minutes.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion from the Commission? Would the City Clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Before I entertain a motion for the agenda, I'd ask if it pleases the Commission if we could add, under new business, an item five to excuse Commissioner Lister from this evening's meeting.
I'll make the motion to add it.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. It's much discussions amongst the Commission about the agenda. Would the City Clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. First up, presentations. Presentation by Kathy Till, Florida League of Cities, to Commissioner Elaine Poe, Home Rule Hero Award. Kathy, podium's yours.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. It's such a pleasure to be with you this evening, and it's certainly my honor to be here to recognize one of your colleagues and a true advocate for the city of Madeira Beach. And if you will indulge me for just a minute, I always like to share why this person was selected to be the recipient of this award, but I want to tell you, this is the highest award that the Florida League of Cities gives out to our elected officials each year in recognition of their advocacy during the previous legislative session. So it is, as I mentioned, it's certainly honored to be here to present this award to Commissioner Poe this evening. I think when they wrote the word "advocate" in the dictionary, they had her picture next to it, as well as where they had the word compassion, as well as passion. Her picture is right there as well. I had the pleasure of getting to know Commissioner Poe this past session, as we work together on an issue that I know is very near and dear to the hearts of all of the people in the city of Madeira Beach, and that is the preemption of home rule authority on the issue of short-term vacation rentals. Excuse me. And as this issue came before us this year, there was an occasion where a group of us, a group of elected officials and myself, from the Sun Coast region, actually had already had a trip scheduled to Tallahassee to meet with some of our legislators to lobby on behalf of this issue, as well as others. And it just so happened that on our way, we found out that why we were there, that a bill that had been sponsored by one of our state representatives was scheduled to be heard in committee on this very issue. So the timing, I guess, everything, all the stars and planets aligned so that we were able to be there for this particular meeting. And I remember Commissioner Poe and I talking on the trip up there about our approach and how we were going to address the body, the legislative body, the committee, on this issue. And I think we went down several different paths, Commissioner, if I'm not mistaken, but we finally decided on what we thought was the best approach. Well, we got there, and to tell you how quickly things changed in Tallahassee, on the way up, we thought we had the votes to get the bill out of committee and move it to the next committee stop. By the time we got up there, we found out we did not have the votes, that it had changed, and this was in a span of a matter of hours. And so upon our arrival, the first thing we did is we went to the Capitol, and we knew that the Democratic Caucus was meeting to talk about this very bill, to determine, you know, how the majority of the caucus was going to vote. And we sort of stationed ourselves right outside the door of where this caucus was meeting, so that immediately, immediately upon their exit, we could sort of, I don't know, what would be the appropriate word, Commissioner?
Attack.
Attack? Okay. I was going to say that, but I gave you that honor.
Good for you.
Which is exactly what we did. And Commissioner Poe went up to one of our state representatives from this area, Representative Darrell Rousan, and was able to share with him the seriousness of this issue in Madeira Beach, and gave him some information. We went from there to the committee hearing, and Representative Rousan, by the way, was one of those legislators that, prior to the meeting, was not going to support the bill. And we went to the meeting, it was standing room only, and it was a very warm room, so as you can imagine, the longer the meeting went, the hotter the temperature got, as well as the tempers within the room. However, the time came to debate this bill, and then at the time that we walked into that room, we were going to lose the votes. It was going to be seven to six, and the vote, the bill was going to fail. And as you know, if it didn't get out of its first committee, it was dead, and it was just done for the entire session. And, but the bill sponsor decided to press forward. He thought he could change some minds with the assistance of some of the folks that were there to testify. So he presented the bill, and then the opposition got their opportunity to get up and talk about why it was a bad bill, and why we should oppose this bill, and why it should be defeated in committee. Well, then it was our turn. And there was a roomful of elected officials, such as Commissioner Poe, from all walks of life, from all different parts of the state that were there, to support this bill. And Commissioner Poe had an opportunity to get up and speak on this, which she did quite passionately. And my timing may be a little off, Commissioner, correct me if I'm wrong, but once the, once all of the elected officials had had an opportunity to speak in favor of the bill, then the bill sponsor came back up, and the committee members started to debate the bill and ask questions. Representative Rousan quoted information that Commissioner Poe had given him not more than an hour ago, or previously, sharing suddenly why this was, had become such a serious issue. By the time that it came time to vote on the bill, not only did we win, but it went from seven to six in defeat to a ten to three success and move it on to the next committee. That was a huge win. But the story continues, and it gets even better. That night at dinner, Commissioner Poe got a personal phone call from State Representative Rousan, telling her that it was because of her, because of her passion, because of her testimony, that he changed his vote. And that's huge. That just never happens in Tallahassee. So not only did she have a tremendous impact that day, but as you all are quite aware, she is an incredible advocate and always puts the best interest of the people of Madeira Beach at the forefront of every decision she makes. So with that, I am here to present to Commissioner Elaine Poe the 2014 Home Rule Hero Award. And if you will permit me, I would like to read to you what the plaque says. It says, "For being a champion in the defense and protection of municipal home rule, the Florida League of Cities presents the Home Rule Hero Award to Elaine Poe for outstanding leadership and continued support throughout the 2014 legislative session. You are an inspiration to the League and a home rule hero for municipalities." Happy for you. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you. I'll see you Thursday.
Commissioner Poe, I can't see you through all your flowers, but I also want to congratulate you.
I'm here.
And let you know that our State House Representative Kathleen Peters, here in District 69, called me today and wanted to personally also congratulate you. She would be here personally today, but she absolutely is, you know, they're having a special session right now in Tallahassee, so she's actually doing her job for our district here in the city of Madeira Beach. So congratulations, and also congratulations from Kathleen Peters.
Thank you. Yeah, she emailed me.
Okay. All right. Next presentation is some presentations of certificate of merit, and if at the podium right now, would please join me, Deputy Patrick Pat Crager, Anna Pankey from the FWC, and Hada Herring, would please join me at the podium. Deputy, come up again. Thank you. And actually, I think I'll do it this way, since they were there and I was not there, I'll go ahead and start with the deputy, because he was on patrol during 4th of July when he noticed something going on in the water. So deputy, if you would like to begin the story, the microphone's right here. Doesn't have to be long, we can keep it short, but I would like for everybody to know the story of that afternoon. Anna, if you'd like to go ahead, I'll go ahead and let you discuss second where it went from there. If you wanted to use the microphone and address the crowd.
Oh, goodness.
That's okay. Don't worry, I'm just as nervous as you. It's no big deal.
So, once I met Officer Crager at my rescue truck, like, we got the call from concerned citizens. Our call actually went to Clearwater Marine Aquarium first, so they forwarded to us, because I was actually positioned a little bit closer to Madeira Beach. And went out, met Officer Crager, we loaded everything into the little four-by-four, and went out to where the dolphin was on the beach. There was another Clearwater volunteer there, her name's Lynn. She had been watching the dolphins, so I spoke to her really briefly, see what its reaction was like. It was tumbling in the waves, it didn't look like it could get a good breath. We had enough people, we had been authorized by NOAA to pull the dolphin if I thought it was necessary. I did think it was necessary, so Officer Crager, Lynn, and I went into the water, put it in a stretcher, got it back on land, got it into the truck, back to Clearwater Marine Aquarium where it is undergoing rehabilitation.
In this hearing, how did you work it all?
Well, yeah, we got the call, it happened during lunchtime, and it was all okay, and thanks to everyone who took effort, effort to be there. Her name's Karen, which is our name's volunteer. She's got, um, she's a teenager, she's a nice guy, so she's really, um, help her out.
Well, ladies and deputy, in appreciation of the city of Madeira Beach, I'd like to present you with certificates of heritage for which you did that day. Deputy? Now, Steve, oh, God, I made a living on water, and you can see a lot of sea life, which I did that day, but I'll see. And I'll tell you what, folks, we'll just take a second here and let those deputies, I know they need to get back on duty to patrol our streets and take care of our safety. If anybody else at this time would like to also leave, we'll take a minute here before we go into the next presentation.
All right, good times, didn't we?
See, Maggie, you thought they were all here for you, dang it. We try to keep them. Okay, at this time, Maggie, would you like to go ahead and give us the library presentation of Gulf Beaches Library?
All right. Well, I would like to thank the city for having me here tonight. I visit the five municipalities that fund the library every year, and I just want to give an update on where we are with our current fiscal year, as well as the budget for our upcoming fiscal year. As you know, there are five municipalities that fund the library, includes Treasure Island, Madeira Beach, Reddington Beach, Reddington Shores, and North Reddington Beach. This past May, the library board had voted on a budget for the upcoming fiscal year, which begins in October, for a total of $501,560. Each of the five municipalities funds a portion of our budget. This year, the library board had asked for a little bit of an increase in the local funding, for a total of $280,000 among the five municipalities. Madeira Beach's portion for the upcoming contribution comes to $74,900, and that represents 27% of the local contribution and about 15% of our entire budget. We get other funding from the county, also just revenue, also donations, and different events that we put on at the library to cover our budget for the year. I want to give a brief update on the past nine months of the year at the library. As you know, we're right across the street here. We're busy. We allow residents from all over the county to come use our facility, as well as visitors from anywhere. They can come into the library, check out materials. If they're not residents, they can get a library card for a fee. We have many people who come and stay in Madeira Beach for the winter, or even we've got a lot of summer visitors right now, too, who do buy temporary cards so that they can purchase material, or they can check materials out. For the first nine months of the fiscal year, which began in October of 2013, we've checked out over 98,000 items. That's a lot of traffic, when you think 98,000 items would fill up quite a bit of space. We've had almost 60,000 people come through our doors. We've had over 300 programs with about 3,800 people in attendance at those programs. We have a variety of programs for adults and children. We just finished up our summer reading program. It was a pretty big hit this year. It'll be nice to, the kids go back to school next week, but we're glad that they do come every year. We've added about 2,300 items to our collection, and we also have to remove items so that we can make space for what we have. We've withdrawn a little over 2,000 items. And our volunteer hours have increased this past nine months. We welcome volunteers to come help us out with anything from shelving books to assisting with programs. We have had over 800 volunteer hours, and we do get a lot of teenagers, too, especially in the summertime, where they're looking for opportunities to get scholarships, so they need hours to volunteer. We welcome those teenagers. We had an increase over last year, the volunteer hours of 21%, so that's huge for us. Sometimes it's hard to find things for volunteers to do, but we will, we will make sure that they have a job. Madeira Beach residents are active users of the library. For a population of the city of 4,313, about 70% of your residents have an active library card. And an active library card is, has an expiration date of three years or less. So your residents are using the library. I think one of the things is it's the convenience of it. You can pretty much walk over here, ride your bike, you can drive over to the library, it's a quick drive from anywhere within the city. So a lot of people in Madeira Beach use the library, and they always have, so we love to see numbers like that. And Madeira Beach is also the highest municipality within the five supporting municipalities, percentage-wise, to have active cardholders. So that's, you really got to give a little kudos to yourself for supporting us. Madeira Beach residents throughout the county have checked out almost 30,000 items for the past nine months. That's a lot of items for people to be checking out, books, DVDs, audiobooks. Also, people can check out electronic books, electronic materials. We count those a little separately from our physical items, but residents are starting to really use electronic sources. I know tonight, you're also appointing a new library board member, so I will, I'm eagerly looking forward to meeting this person and having him come onboard. And we have a really good board right now. We're looking at a couple of new, new things that we're going to be doing in the coming year. One of the things is we're going to try to do some new fundraising activities. I think we're going to put food for thought on the backburner for a little while, and try something new. We just need to kind of refresh things a little bit, and maybe go in a little bit of a different direction, and I'm sure that your, your library board representatives will let you know what the plans are. And we are just kind of continuing on with our programs and computer classes, film programs, and I really appreciate Madeira Beach's continued support of the library here. It's really, really good organization to support for the whole community. So if anybody has any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Maggie, I just wanted to tell you thank you very much. You're doing a great job. I know I've had the chance to be part of the book sales over there, and always working with that, how you get the books to the troops overseas, and thank you very much. Does any other commissioners have anything for Maggie at this time?
Nothing, but she's always done a great job since she's been in Madeira Beach.
Yes, thank you.
We've made a success out of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And that's Candy right there. All right, next public comment. This section is reserved for public comments. All matters or concern pertaining to city business and which are not on the agenda, public comment is limited to three minutes. Would anybody like to speak this evening? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Palladino and Commissioners and staff. My name's Alan Martinez. I'm with the Treasure Island and Madeira Beach Chamber of Commerce. Also with me here today is Joe Massaro, who's our president, and I just wanted to take a couple minutes to thank you for all the support that you've given us, and as well as the city of Treasure Island. We just got through a major membership drive, so I wanted to kind of update you on our success. It started on July 28th with the kickoff party, which I know yourself and Shane were both present, along with Mayor Minning. And for the next 48 hours after that, our board and our staff walked the streets, knocked on doors, made phone calls, and as a result, during that 48 hours, we actually signed up 61 new members, for over $16,000 in membership dues. The total membership now is at an all-time high. It's over, it's approximately 310, 311 members, which it's never been over 300 members before. And this is just, this is just the beginning, as far as we're concerned. We've set a goal as a chamber of doing everything that we can to represent our local businesses to the best of our ability, to find out and understand what their priorities are, what their needs are, and work closely with the city of Madeira Beach and the city of Treasure Island to make sure that we deliver to them what it is they need to be more successful. And that's, that's, that's all we're focused on. We'll do some events. We'll continue to do events in Treasure Island, and obviously, we're going to have events planned here in Madeira Beach, but in terms of, of the value that we want to deliver, it's strictly about finding out what their needs are and making sure that they get it. Our top team actually delivered 21 memberships. One of our volunteers in the office actually brought in 14 memberships, so it was a great performance by everybody. We didn't, we didn't do it alone. We had a group called the Oliver Group come in and give us a, a training on a Saturday morning, which a lot of our board showed up for, and our staff showed up for. It was a real total team effort, and we just look forward to working with you closely and with the, and with Treasure Island closely to, to make it more of a success. One quick thing I want to mention is that we're going to send out a survey, not just to our membership, but to all of the business owners in Treasure Island and Madeira Beach, whether or not they are members of the chamber or not. It's probably going to be about 12 questions. We probably have four or five as a chamber that we want to find out, and I'd like to ask, if you're interested, if there were two or three things that you'd like to ask the business community their opinions on, we'd be happy to incorporate that into our survey, and we'll, we're going to have the city of Treasure Island do the same. We don't have an exact date for when it's going to go out, but it'll probably be very soon. Last thing is, August 20th at 5:30 at the chamber office, will be a red carpet reception for all of our new members and all of our existing members to show our appreciation for the new group. So thanks again, appreciate it.
Alan, thank you, sir. And, no, not just the Treasure Island, Madeira Beach Chamber, but also the Beaches Chamber, Penniles Park Chamber, the Clearwater Chamber. It's, it's important for cities and businesses to work together, because commerce coming into our cities, that's how we grow. I mean, small business is the backbone of our city, so for what the chambers, all of y'all do out there, thank you very much. Doug, thanks. Would anybody else like to speak this evening? All right, closing public comment. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
I so move, Mr. Mayor, we accept the consent agenda as presented.
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any comment from staff?
Not at this time, Mr. Mayor. We're happy to answer any questions any of you may have.
Is there any comment or questions from the Commission? At this time, I'd like to ask Ms., the lovely Candy Matthews, if she would please come up and introduce herself, and that's all I will ask.
I'm Candy Matthews from Georgia, and I'm excited for this opportunity, and I thank you very much.
Now you're from Madeira Beach.
Now I'm from Madeira Beach.
Yes, ma'am.
Gladly.
And this lady, folks, this lady can actually deck out a boat for the Christmas parade. She's outstanding, trust me.
I love snowmen.
Candy, thank you very much for taking your time to work with your city. Thank you. Is there any further comment? Would the City Clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next unfinished business, none. New business, Resolution 2014-34. Mr. City Attorney, would you please read by title only?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Resolution 2014-34, a resolution of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, mending the FY 2014 general fund budget by increasing expenditures for professional planning services in the amount of $5,000 and providing an effective date. That is the reading of Resolution 2014-34 by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion?
I move--
Go ahead, Pat.
I can't see, go ahead, Nancy. I can't-- I move to approve Resolution 2014-34.
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any comments from staff?
No, sir.
Is there any comments or questions from the Commission? Is there any further comment? Would the City Clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next, Resolution 2014-35. Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Resolution 2014-35, a resolution of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, authorizing execution of a highway landscape reimbursement and maintenance memorandum of agreement for rehabilitation of existing landscaping within state rights of way, providing, for reading by title only, and providing for an effective-- Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next unfinished business, none, new business, resolution 2014-34. Mr. City Attorney, would you please read by title only?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, resolution 2014-34, a resolution of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, mending the FY 2014 general fund budget by increasing expenditures for professional planning services in the amount of $5,000 and providing an effective date. That is the reading of resolution 2014-34 by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I move.
Go ahead, Pat.
I can't see, go ahead and answer.
I move to approve resolution 2014-34.
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any comments from staff?
No, sir.
Is there any comments or questions from the commission? Is there any further comment? Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next, resolution 2014-35. Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, resolution 2014-35, a resolution of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, authorizing execution of a highway landscape reimbursement and maintenance memorandum of agreement for rehabilitation of existing landscaping within state rights of way, providing by, for reading by title only and providing for an effective date. That was the reading of resolution 2014-35 by title only.
At this time, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to pass the resolution 2014-35.
A second.
Motion's made and seconded. Is there any comment from staff, Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, the only thing that I noticed when reading the resolution was that the amount of the grant was missing, and so just for your information, it's a $25,000 grant.
Okay. Is there any questions or comment from the commission? Is there any?
Where?
Yes.
Where was this, where's this grant coming from?
Just aim, Andrew.
Lead the state.
FDOT, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. Is there any further comment? Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next item, public hearing, Mr. City Attorney, would you please move forward?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is item number three on your agenda, to consider an alcoholic beverage use permit. It's number 14.05 from a two COP to a four COP to consume alcoholic beverages on the premises located at 13,437 Gulf Boulevard. This is Kelly's Irish Pub Incorporated, DBA Kelly's Mad Bar.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move the resolution number, what is it?
Public hearing.
Is this to be a motion to approve the alcoholic beverage use permit?
Oh, I'm sorry. Number 14.05 from a two COP to a four COP.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any comments from staff, Mr. City Manager?
Staff's recommendations for approval.
And I'd like to say I've been down and met Mr. Kelly and been into his establishment that once was called Terry's Tavern. I know that the owner now has dumped a lot of money in that business to go ahead and upgrade it. He is working on kind of making it more like a neighborhood hub and bar, so, and it is in my neighborhood, so I have paid a lot of attention to this property, and I haven't heard any complaints from law enforcement on it, so I don't see any problem with this. Is there any other comments from the commission? Is there any further comment? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Bianca Plaza, and we are towards the front of that tavern where they're looking to upgrade the, the permit. And I own a condo there, and it's a vacation rental place, and it's a family-oriented type place where people go and enjoy the week at the beach. And we've owned that property for many years, and that tavern there has always been a little nuisance to us because our condo sits right towards the street, so we can hear the music being played very late at night. I'm, I'm appreciative, you know, of your comment that, you know, they're looking to upgrade that, but having been there for 20 years, that hasn't been the case. So let's hope that the future, it does, you know, make some improvements, but I still think that they have the license for the liquor and that we should leave it that way. A lot of it's towards the, I don't know.
In, in, we're a small town, so we all kind of talk to each other. Have you been over and met the new owner?
No, haven't.
You, you really should, and, and, you know, I was kind of surprised. He called me personally when he took over. He, he, you know, told me where he was going, how he was going to fix the place up, and of course, in two months, you know, called me. Went down there, went down with my wife. We both had a beer at the time. Like I said, I live on Boca Seague Avenue, so I'm only two streets over. I haven't heard any problems from law enforcement, and I, and I know what it used to be. I know when it was Terry's Tavern, I know what was drawn in there. I know that the issues that the law enforcement.
This year, law enforcement has been out 10 times.
Has law enforcement been out 10 times?
Yes.
Okay.
I have that, and I also have some documentation. I did pull some public record, and I did get some assistance from the, the police department today, and I do have that if you, if you'd like to look at it.
That's okay, I take your word for it.
So I don't know about the new ownership. I don't know anything about that, but I just assume that it was the same owners because it doesn't look like the names changed.
Yeah, it used to be Terry's Tavern, now it's Kelly's.
And it's still an Irish pub, so.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't get it, but perhaps.
Yeah, okay.
There is some new, you know, things that are going on there, but, and all the calls out there are just nuisance kind of things, people trespassing, they've shown up drunk, it's a bar, people do that.
Yeah.
So naturally, law enforcement has to go out there and treat them as trespassers to remove them from the location. So we're directly right in front of that, and, you know, families trying to vacation, naturally, it's not good for the whole neighborhood, I, I think. And also the fact that there's so many places to drink by John's Pass, why do we need to continue to bring it more forward when the city really should be looking to clean it up, make it more family-oriented, and just promote other types of things and activities? They could put, you know, a lot of different businesses that would promote the area in a better fashion. Just my opinion.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any other comment?
We need an explanation here about, for a statute, this sort of situation.
I, I can jump in your, first of all, you have several code provisions in your code under chapter 110. For you to make this determination, this is basically an expansion, or the intensity of the alcoholic beverage zoning license. And your code says that in determining whether or not that you're going to approve this, you're going to look at five items, and let me just read them real quick. Number one is the extent to which the location and the extent to which the proposed alcoholic beverage request will adversely affect the character of the existing neighborhood. Number two, the extent to which traffic generated as a result of the location of the proposed alcoholic beverage request will create congestion or present a safety hazard. Number three, whether or not the proposed use is compatible with the particular location for which it is proposed. Number four, whether or not the proposed use will adversely affect public safety. And number five, no application for review under this section shall be considered until applicant is paid in full any outstanding charges, fees, interest, fines, or penalties owed by the applicant to the city under this section of, any section of the code. So once you determine that, that they've met those requirements, then they're entitled to, to the change, if you've determined that they've met those requirements.
And Mr. City Manager, they have met those requirements. And what staffs?
Yeah, the staff's review, I don't want to say they, they've met those requirements because I think it's, it's an opinionated type issue there, you know, depending on whether or not you think it'll change the, the character of the neighborhood or adversely affect the neighborhood. We looked at it as what it was and what this new owner has brought in, and I think it's fair to say there's a drastic improvement. I understand the, the, the speaker's issue, and it is, it's a bar. You know, you're gonna, you're gonna have some issues, I think, if you, if we, you know, asked for the, the police results from a number of bars in, in Madeira Beach, they, you'd probably have more. But again, this, this, it's a, it's a, almost a, it's a political decision on behalf of y'all. If you say, hey, you know, adding liquor at that location based off of where it's at isn't a good idea, that's your prerogative. But again, what, when I looked at it from a staff standpoint, what it was and what it's evolved into is certainly a drastic improvement, which proved to me that I think the owner's responsible enough to handle this expanded type of license.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Mission, any further questions or discussion? Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next, item four, public hearing, Mr. City Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, this is a similar-type hearing. This is agenda item number four, to consider alcoholic beverage use permit number 14.06 for a two COP alcoholic beverage license at 12,983 Village Boulevard to sell beer and wine for consumption on premises, and the business name is Mad Beach Billiards. And based upon your code, you're obligated to comply with those or find those same elements have been met under section 110-532 that I read in the prior agenda item.
At this time, we'll entertain a motion.
Have they been met?
The staff then report. Yes.
Same, same issue again. You know, from a staff standpoint, we certainly couldn't find a reason that we would recommend denial, but again, it, you know, and this one, I believe this is the one that's located in John's Pass. We certainly have that type of atmosphere, at least partially, down there, so there was no reason for denial, at least on behalf of staff.
But then I'll entertain the motion to pass a public hearing to consider the two COP alcoholic beverage license.
I'll second.
Motion's made and seconded. Is there any further comment from staff, Mr. City Manager?
No, sir. Staff recommendations for approval.
Okay. Is there any more comment or questions from commission? Is there any further comment? Would the city clerk please call? Oh, yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name is Anita Miller, and I am the owner of Mad Beach Billiards, and I just wanted to put a face to the, to the business. I am happy that you will agree with me. It's going to be just a very quiet place. We have two pool tables and a dark ward. We'll be serving just beer and wine, no hard liquor, and we hope that is a nice addition to John's Pass.
Excellent, welcome.
Ms. Miller, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I'm over here. Is this going to be like family-oriented, or will there be children allowed in at this?
I suppose we could. I, I don't know if people really bring their kids to a bar, but, you know, we will have alcohol there.
You'll have beer and wine, yeah.
Beer and wine, yes.
Okay, so it would be just a regular bar then, or pool tables, dark games?
Pool tables, sorry.
Okay.
The only thing I could ask you, if you might think of adding in the future is a ping-pong table. There's no ping-pong table.
It's not big enough.
And that's the only thing I figured out I can beat the city manager at, is ping-pong.
Yeah, those pool tables take up a lot of room.
I can beat them at ping-pong. Thank you. Can the commission have any other questions? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Thank you.
Is there any further comment? Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next item is, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to excuse Commissioner Terry Lister from the August 12th commission meeting.
I'll make that motion, please.
I'll second it, Mr. Mayor.
All right, motions are made and seconded. Is there any discussion from the commission? Is there any further discussion? Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Reports and correspondence, I would just like to report from the Big C meeting. It was a great meeting. We actually had Bruce Muller from the EMS out there. Bruce's main talks were water safety here on the Gulf beaches, and the big discussion was water safety and water safety equipment. Mr. Muller, at that time, produced a map showing the majority of the water rescues are actually where we pretty much knew where they are, were going to be, John's Pass. Madeira Beach Fire Rescue probably, and Water Rescues are 60 percent. So the discussion that came up and that Bruce Muller and the county's working with now with the different fire departments here out on the beaches, is for county money to upgrade their water equipment, the water safety training, or, and their water safety equipment. So that was a fantastic meeting, and actually, Mr. Muller was also at the mayor's council and covered the same things. Does any other commissioners have any reports, correspondence?
I'd like to make a little announcement, please, that we have the exchange club from St. Petersburg that has graciously come to our city to offer their help and, and donate their time, I guess I would say, Jane?
Mm-hmm.
For our 9/11 memorial. They're very impressed with it. And we will be having a cornhole. Any of you familiar with this game called Cornhole Tournament? September the 6th over at the Archibald Park. It's going to be something that's going to be lots of fun for a lot of people. I am not a corn, what do you call it, cornhole player.
Say that with a straight face.
But I'm willing to learn. Now, let me tell you guys, I'm willing to learn. And they like for people that used to have teams, you know, $25 a person to play. They say they have a lot of, a lot of fun, raise a lot of money. They're also going to have music. Our tenants over at, over at the snack shack have been so cooperative and so kind, and the cooperation between this exchange club, which comes from St. Petersburg, there's two or three of them that's working together, has been absolutely remarkable. And I'm so proud to be able to work with them in our city because I know it's going to be something that we're going to remember for a while. So after you get done tossing that bag of corn and hitting that hole, or whatever you're supposed to be doing, then we're going to have some fun with music and a few beers and have a good time together. So if anybody's interested, why, please come to City Hall, you can sign up, get ready to go, and I guess I won't have any more time to remind, to remind anybody, but there's lots of information around here about it. So if you're interested, please come to City Hall or call me. My name's in the telephone book, no problem. And I guess that's all I wanted to say, other than we're working closer and closer to our final dedication of the memorial. As you've noticed, we've added a few additions to it. It's going to be something very nice for our city when it's finished.
It's beautiful at night.
I know, it is pretty at night. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, and all y'all folks out there, call Commissioner Lister, the guy's a blue-chip player in cornhole. Trust me, he smoked me and the city manager, and so I don't.
He's already registered, he's my partner.
Oh, really? So you dropped me? You dropped me like a rock on that. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. That's awesome.
We're going to be like, we're going to be.
Mr. City Attorney?
I just got one thing. I wanted to let you know that as a result of sending out the cease and desist letters regarding the short-term rentals to the companies that were advertising short-term rentals in your city, we have received a couple of responses. We've received responses from www.homaway.com, wwwvrbo.com, and zillow.com, and the responses that we're getting to the cease and desist letter are, hey, this is not our problem. We have specific language in the contracts that we have with the people that advertise through us that say that they have a legal obligation to meet all local regulations, including permits, licenses, occupational tax, occupational license taxes, safety compliance, and as well as, you know, lease terms and so forth. So they take it very, very seriously, but what they're basically saying is, is we're not going to stop doing what we're doing. We're just going to bring it to the attention of the people that are advertising that they have to comply with the terms of the code. So there is one more letter coming that I expect. I'm waiting for that from the attorney. I did speak to an attorney on the telephone from another of these advertising groups, but I want to let you know that they do have provisions on their website telling people that want to advertise that they need to comply with the city's regulations. So I will provide copies of these letters to the commission so that you will understand which ones are responding and what they're actually saying. That's all I had.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Does anybody have any questions for the city attorney? Mr. City Manager?
Two quick things. So we have that press junket on Friday at 10 o'clock. That's for Rock Park. Remember our children, if you remember that, that's Bill Karns and that group. Should be quite a group. We're expecting, you know, between 50 and 80 people. Some light refreshments in here. The architects are going to have 3D visions of what the park will look like, that type to dine there afterwards, so, albeit both, if, if, if we can get a showing from the commission, it'd be, be appreciated, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Right, and Cafe Alma's, most folks don't know. If you haven't been there, go there. We used to travel from here to St. Pete to go there, so it's great to have them.